So, welcome everyone. I call the November 18, 2020 Planning Commission Meeting to order. The main purposes of tonight's meeting are discussions of the... I get a message there. The main purposes of tonight's meeting are discussions of the Critical Area Code Amendments and the Canyon Park Subarea Plan Development Regulations. We expect an additional hearing for the Canyon Park Subarea Plan and vote on recommendations on December 2nd at our next meeting. After the commission action, the plan will be considered by the council with an additional public hearing at that time. Seeing... There's a chat message there, but I'm not sure what it means, so I'm going to carry on. Before we move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our remote meeting format. Under Governor Inslee's proclamation 20-28 regarding open public meetings, this meeting will be held remotely. Public comment will be allowed both in writing and orally. The official notice, city website, and tonight's agenda all provided information to the public for providing comments. People wishing to comment were instructed to notify staff or provide written comments by 3:00 PM today. The video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting. For our phone-in callers during staff presentations, staff will make every effort to specify which materials they're referencing so everyone can follow along. Those who provided advance notice are able to make comments under the Audience Comments section of the meeting. An email was encouraged as well and will be acknowledged. At this point, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the attendance of the commissioners. And we have Commissioner Olson. Commissioner Peestrup is absent and excused. Commissioner Kurd. Commissioner Vleit. Commissioner Alderks. And Commissioner Augustafson. All present and out of court with the exception of Commissioner Peestrup. We also have Director Cotterman and Senior Planner Boyd participating. So, for the commissioners, at specific breaks in the presentation, I'll be calling on members who wish to speak or ask a question. It's been working pretty well with either the little post-its or kind of waving in front of the screen. I'll do my best to recognize you. And there are presentations up. The ribbon sometimes drops people off on one side, so I'll try to scan and find you. Please mute your microphone when not speaking. So, moving on to our first agenda item. First agenda item is public comment. And I know we have a person interested. I hope she's back. In keeping with Governor Jay Inslee's emergency proclamation 20-28 regarding public gatherings and open public meetings, the city has accepted visitor comment in writing as well as accepted sign-up sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to staff no later than 3:00 PM today were forwarded to all commissioners and are part of the record. Commissioner Cotterman, please let us know which comments we received for this meeting? You're muted.
I started out on the wrong foot. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, there were two, two sets of comments that were received prior to tonight's meeting. And those were forwarded to you. One was from Ann Agard. And that was forwarded to you by Senior Planner Dave Boyd the other day. And then I also forwarded you a letter from Venice Felton, representing Canyon Park Business Affairs Association. So, those are, those should have been received by the commission. If you did not receive those, please let me know. I'll make sure that, that you get those. I have not received any of the written comments, and I only had one contact to request to speak this evening, and that was Ann Agard. And I noticed we do have one other caller, so we may have a second speaker as well. But first, I'll check if, Ann, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You have three minutes, Ann.
Thank you. Planning Commission, my comments concerned a critical areas ordinance. And as you, I know have received now the written comments that I had. So, these are on the whole additional comments that I have. First, this, my first comment involves the, the section of first paragraph on the November 12th, the new Shannon Wilson memo would be found on page 28 of your packet. And page, and the October 28th, it is the first paragraph. And page 19. This involves buffer width modifications. I cannot find any reference to the reference that was given in the Shannon Wilson memo of Bothell Municipal Code 1313020F5B, which is referenced as allowing in the Shoreline Master Program, reduced buffer widths based on existing physical conditions. And the memo states that these were broadened to include legally established structures and legally established uses or activities. I do find a citation on 1313020F7B, which may be what they refer to. But unlike, there is also a discrepancy that ecology did not approve any language in the 2019 periodic update relating to categories and improvements that may be a buffer to barrier, maybe a barrier to buffer function. So, I would ask that you request further clarification and check the citation numbers and ask for specific examples of what they are talking about because I could not, it simply did not make sense based on the information that was given. The second comment has to do with this very last five sentences in that same section on buffer width modifications. And I did address this very briefly in my memo to you earlier, but I want to emphasize the statement that is made by Shannon and Wilson where they say that the lack of quantitative science on, or trade-offs between a snag or piece of downed wood and buffer width would be depend on the city's ability to review and a wetland scientist or a consultant to review and establish some kind of best available science that currently is not available before you would include this in a proposed code amendment.
Okay, and your three minutes are about up.
Okay. Basically, there is no basis for, for how you would trade downed wood for buffer reduction. And finally, I want to say again that regarding the, the priority that is in the Bothell Municipal Code and the reference in the Shannon Wilson to the recent Department of Ecology Wetland Mitigation Package, I did attend that November 4th webinar by Department of Ecology. And I specifically asked for whether or not local jurisdictions can establish a priority within...
I have to ask you to wrap it up because you're at about four minutes now.
I would like to finish my sentence for wetlands, for local, for wetlands, local mitigation sites. And I was told that yes, this is a possibility.
Thank you, Ms. Agard.
... consideration and particularly towards the comments I gave about the correction in the document.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Agard. Do we have another commenter? Call in three. Seeing no indication of any other comments.
I've requested, I've requested the caller unmute. I don't know, caller, I don't have a number, so I don't know if...
Mr. Director Cotterman, Mr. Chair, can you hear me now?
Yes. Could you identify yourself, please?
Yes. Thank you, Director Cotterman. This is Ian Morrison with McCullough Hill Leary. I have just a brief comment on the Canyon Park Development Regulation Update.
Okay.
You've got three minutes. Three minutes.
All right. Again, thank you, Commissioners and Director Cotterman. This is Ian Morrison. I'm a land use attorney with McCullough Hill Leary. I am here on behalf of Juno of Bristol Myers Squibb Company. You have heard from Juno and Bristol Myers about the request for a very limited vesting runway to help support the in-progress permit application for them to expand their Bothell campus at Canyon Park to continue to do the work on healthcare research. I simply want to say you've heard for, you've heard the request. I want to say thank you to staff. On page 47 of the package, there is a recommendation from staff on vesting language, limited vesting language that would allow for projects like Juno's in-progress plans to continue with certainty and predictability. We really appreciate the work that Director Cotterman and the city attorney have done. We've appreciated the deliberation of the commission so far. We support this language wholeheartedly. We would ask that the commission recommend bringing this forward and just want to say thank you to staff and to the commissioners for the deliberation. We're very pleased to see that this be, it's recommended for inclusion, and we think this is the right kind of narrow policy that will support job creation for projects like the Juno expansion that is already in progress. So, we appreciate your time and look forward to the commission's deliberation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comment and feedback. So, seeing no other individuals on this call, I'm going to proceed to the next agenda item, which is the approval of the minutes. And we've all been provided the minutes of the November 4th meeting in our email. All I ask is there a motion to approve those minutes? I saw Commissioner Alderks first.
Jenny Alderks is here. I motioned to approve the minutes from our last meeting.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. I saw Commissioner Vleit raise his hand. We'd like this second.
Second approval of the minutes of November 4th, 2020.
Okay, is there any discussion around the minutes as provided in our packet for the November 4th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting? Seeing no, no one indicating an interest in or need to discuss, would all of the favor of approving those minutes indicate by raising your hand? I see unanimous consent. The minutes for the November 4th, 2020 meeting are approved. Next item on the agenda is new business. Is there any new business before us?
No new business from staff, Mr. Chair.
And I'll remind commissioners, we also have place for reports from members later on, so if you want to bring something up, then you certainly may. So, with that, we'll move on to the study session portion of the meeting. The first item before us is the Critical Area Regulation Code Amendments. And Senior Planner Boyd, will you lead us in this discussion?
Yes, thank you and good evening, commissioners. I am going to open up a presentation or attempt to open up the presentation provided by Amy Sumi of Shannon Wilson. Are you seeing the presentation?
Yes.
And I also would like to thanks the commissioners for their patience in my attempt to present this material at the 11th fourth meeting when Amy wasn't able to join us from Kodiak. She is here tonight, and I will turn it over, over to her shortly. I just would like to say that the commission did have a chance to review the materials and asked a number of good questions.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Is that Amy? Oh, dear.
Yeah, okay. I, their audio is getting out quite a bit for me, so I'm hoping that you can hear me steadily and hopefully I'll be able to make out your questions. So, let's see. Again, and I'm not sure if the audio is on or if you want video or not. I can't see anyone else's video at the moment.
We can hear you quite well, thank you.
I think, I think Dave was still introducing you.
Okay. Yeah, the audio is terrible for some reason, right? All of a sudden, and so I'm sorry if I can't hear what's going on exactly.
Okay. Can you see the, your, the presentation?
Yes, I can.
Okay. So, with that, I will turn it over to you and just let me know when you want me to advance the, the slides and, and we'll go from there.
Okay, thank you. And so, basically what I thought might, we might do is I would just use the presentation from last time, but I have updated it with a few items, and I thought we might just go through what I have, stop and pause and see if anyone has any questions about what David presented last time. And then otherwise focus on those areas that, and issues that you raised in the last meeting and that also Ann has brought up in her communications and in her earlier comments this evening. So, unless anyone has any questions on this, these first few slides, and maybe David, if you just kind of step through them and can listen for, for interest, I thought we might otherwise just step down to slide nine unless there's other discussion.
Okay. Just going to go through these slowly so people can at least take... And I should have mentioned that in addition to the packet materials from last time, Amy has provided some comments based on the questions received last time. Just tell me when to stop. Is this...
Yeah. Yep.
We can't hear you if you're speaking.
Maybe we should just hold steady here for a second. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
You can, okay. And so, there was a number of questions raised about the buffer width modification section. And so, I decided to start with this non-standard width item. Speaking to Ann's comment as well, there is a typo in the memo from November 12th. It should say 1404.530F1B. So, I'm missing the one. And that was in reference to your existing, your existing critical area, which effectively stops a buffer at the edge of a legally established roadway. And then, within the Shoreline Master Program, we added a few more circumstances in which the buffer would effectively be halted. And those are in, let me do it real quick. Those are in 1313020... And that's where the Shoreline Master Program stopped the buffer at, as before, a legally established roadway, but also a legally established structure or a legally established use or activity. So, those were the three things that were sort of added to the list of items that effectively ends the buffer. And I think in practice, that city felt that that was still maybe a little bit difficult for staff and applicants to interpret. So, out of that sort of experience, we generated a potential improvement that would... That just sort of adds some clarity. And we started again with this modified language from the SMP as a base and then further added that clarity about specific types of legally established structures or uses or activities that we felt typically or commonly would provide an actual barrier to the buffer function progressing, you know, through that use or across that structure activity. And then I think an important addition we made and really gives the sort of the best available science a boost was to add some additional criteria so that it isn't just as simple as you have a roadway, a structure, or a use or activity, but you need to sort of go through the steps of identifying how that structure and if that structure or use does in fact, in fact, pose a barrier to buffer functions. So, I think that's an important modification that, that we've made in this particular proposal.
Okay. Let's pause for a minute. Yeah, I'm going to scan the commissioners and see if there are any questions or comments to this part. So, I'm not seeing anyone across the ribbon expressing interest, so let's then proceed. Thank you.
And this next slide, I put a little bit more information about the buffer reduction enhancement. And this is just an idea that was sort of born out of explanation by Department of Ecology about why they eliminated. This is an option that with current standards, buffer is presumed to have appropriate vegetation. And so, it doesn't make sense then to allow them to reduce it if they provide that appropriate vegetation. And so, the thought I had, I could imagine some scenario I had, and this would be very site-specific and subject to, you know, an applicant and their consultant biologist presenting a strong case for it, that perhaps some other types of non-vegetative improvements would justify some reduction in the buffer. And I wouldn't assign it a value like one snag equals a one-foot reduction or a five-foot reduction. It would all be very site-specific. As Ann mentioned and I mentioned, there simply isn't, you know, specific quantitative science that says, you know, X snags equals X feet. However, I think there is a number of scenarios where addition of snags and large woody debris can really provide some significant improvement to the ability of that particular buffer to support a broader array of wildlife species, you know, those species that are dependent on snags and, you know, cavities, use that decaying wood to hollow out a nest site, or they forage on the insects and all those types of things that can be found. And that can really, I think, broaden the array of wildlife that would utilize a given wetland. Now, obviously, many wetlands, you know, might already have snags and large woody debris or their vegetation community is such that those things are anticipated to develop, you know, in the near future. But if it were, for example, a young red alder kind of monoculture or, you know, just a young deciduous community, it can take a long time before you would see snags and then downed wood be introduced into that environment otherwise. So, that was just a thought I had. I am not tightly wed or married to this thought. It would be qualitative, and I think it would be up to, I think, the quality, explain what the existing condition is and how, what the wood would benefit the wetland infrastructure. And it would tend to be by it.
Okay, let's pause. I think I saw Commissioner Vleit want to ask a question.
Certainly open to, open to discussion. I believe that ecology reviewed, that ecology reviewed our analysis letter, which included this here, and they did not raise any red flags about it.
Okay, if you'll pause for a minute, we do have a question or comment from a commissioner.
I'll give time to see if there's any further questions about the idea.
I'm not sure you are hearing me. Do you hear me? I don't know where we go with that. Commissioner Vleit, would you please comment or your question or comment?
Yeah, the first, the first is the quality is kind of hard to hear our consultants tonight, but there's some kind of, I'm getting a lot of background noise. I don't know if everybody else is hearing that. But secondly, I guess my question is, there's nothing to stop development from introducing snags or whatever, but retaining the ecology, I guess, recommended width, correct?
So, this is Mike Cotterman. I just sent a text, not a text, I'm sorry, I just sent a chat, which I try not to use during meetings, but I'm hoping Amy will see the chat that I sent her. She's not making out anything, so she's not able to hear us. So, Amy, I'm going to ask you, I'm going to ask Amy to, to log out and log back in, see if that helps. And I'd also note that I have been muting people as I hear background noise. So, I try to reduce that if I can, but please mute yourselves when you're not speaking.
Okay, so let's pause for a minute while we let Amy log in and out because I don't think she was hearing me all even when I was speaking.
No, she said that she couldn't make out any words. It's all jumbled.
Commissioner Kurd, do you have a question that doesn't require the consultant participation?
It does, yeah. This is Carsten, thanks. I have a question that maybe staff might be able to answer, and it's about these qualitative judgments. If it's up to the planning department to make a call on some of the more qualitative assumptions, is staff adequately kind of prepared and has expertise to make biological assessments like that? Or kind of what's the, what's the makeup of the review staff at the city?
So, this is Dave Boyd. Can you hear me? Okay. So, staff does review these applications, but almost always will pass on, certainly any application that asks for reduced buffer, will pass those on to a third-party reviewer. So, we do have experts on hand to, to review all applications and review. And the, the applications are required to have reports by qualified well-in-biologists, and then they get a third-party review by our on-call well-in-biologist.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I think Amy has, she was calling in to the call-in number, and she says that she can hear now. So, Amy, can you hear me?
Can you hear me? I can hear you.
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, great. I am so sorry. I did not know either trouble.
You're a little bit faint, Amy, so if you could speak maybe a little louder or closer to the microphone and...
Okay.
That's much better. Yes, much better. Thank you. Okay. So, I don't know where we are in the presentation because that just went blank on my screen.
Yes, I can't see anything either on the screen. It's just black.
Well, if it's not one thing, it's another.
Bear with me. I, I stopped sharing so that I could...
So, we're just a little better than Kodiak, huh?
Apparently. I didn't think linwood was that far, but...
Okay, looks like we're back. Do you see that now, Amy?
Not yet. Still black. But I have my presentation up on another screen, so maybe I'll just try and keep up with where you are and follow on my own.
Okay. This one is, this one's labeled buffer width modifications, and it has two bullets. The first bullet starts with buffer reduction with enhancement. I think it's the one you were just talking about, but maybe you could go over that again because I'm not sure that we heard everything. And then I believe Commissioner Vleit had a question regarding that as well.
Okay, all right. So, I'll just kind of start from the beginning with that one. Is that the buffer reduction with enhancement as a general, oh, good, I can see the screen again, as a general enhancement has kind of gone away because with the new standards, the presumption is that the buffer has an appropriate vegetated condition, and if it doesn't, then you need to make it so. And so, there is no longer, you know, the ability to reduce it and then enhance with vegetation because that's the baseline. With that explanation... Um, with that explanation that ecology provided, it sort of begs the question, at least in my mind, as to whether there might be other enhancements that could be very valuable from a wildlife perspective in particular, um, that might lend themselves to some level of buffer reduction. And I didn't specify in my analysis letter, um, that it would be any particular amount, 25 feet or any other, any other number. Um, as Anne mentioned, it, it would be, you know, there is no quantitative kind of calculus for one snag equals five feet or one slice or, you know, same thing with large woody debris or downed wood. Um, but I really do see that there is potential for, um, an argument to be made that in, in, for example, a monoculture of young red alder, you know, with maybe some other shrubby understory, that it can really take a long time for snags and downed wood to develop in that community on their own, and that they have very high potential, um, and wildlife value in terms of, uh, providing habitat for snag and, you know, other dependent species, um, that use the softer wood and can carve out nest cavities or can find, you know, lots of insects and, um, other, you know, forage items or prey, um, on that snag. They can also use the snag for other kinds of perches or cover, um, same thing with the downed wood. So that was kind of a scenario where I can envision that it might be, um, an argument that someone might want to try making and could develop a good case for. Um, as I also mentioned in my, in my letter already, that, um, it would be more qualitative because there isn't a science tit for tat kind of a, a thing. Um, and it would require, you know, the city or a city's consultant to sort of review that argument and, and then decide whether that has value or not. Um, it was just an idea. Um, I'm not married to it. Um, and I think, you know, there's real concerns about, you know, implementation and, um, how it could be done consistently. But, um, I do think that there are scenarios where it could be very valuable and really boost uh, wildlife use of an area that might otherwise take, you know, 50 or more years to, to have that kind of habitat structure develop on its own.
And then, uh, Senior Planner Boyd, you indicated that the city does retain consultants presumably on-call to provide the sort of expertise that would be required to do that biological assessment?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I think we can move to the next slide.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I believe Commissioner Leet had a question, and I don't know if we got an answer to that question.
Yeah, I also see Commissioner Gustafson. Commissioner Leet?
Uh, Commissioner Leet, uh, thank you. Yeah, the question is for the presenter. Um, there's nothing to stop, um, a property. There's nothing to stop a property owner from, uh, putting a snag or other types of woody debris in the wetland area to enhance the habitat, is there?
No, not that I'm aware of. I think that if, um, depending on how you would, there may be, you know, short-term construction kind of related impacts if you need to use equipment. You know, snags are fairly large and you need to plant them pretty securely. So that would be kind of my only thought is that there may be issues with, um, installation. But I would presume those would be temporary and could be easily addressed through just restoring the area as you retreated with the equipment out of the, the buffer. And certainly downed wood would be fairly easy to place.
Okay, thank you.
Would be again, an enhancement. Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Gustafson?
Hi, thank you, Amy. It's nice to hear you again, and I thank you for the memo, which had a lot of very clear, good information in it. And my question is also on the buffer width modifications. I'm not sure when we talk about the snags, is this a way to reduce the buffer to the ecology-approved minimum? Similar to the other minimization improvements we talked about, redirecting light and so forth? Or, on the other hand, would this be a way to reduce the buffer below the standard ecology minimum? For example, looking at a class two wetland, if somebody put in snags, are we talking about reducing it to 75 feet in exchange for those snags? Or are we talking about reducing it below 75 feet to like 50 feet or some other unknown um, n- new buffer distance? Thank you.
Yeah, this wouldn't be related to the minimization measures, um, which are more about the design of the proposed development um, and sort of best management practices for, for the development itself. Um, this would be a reduction of the standard buffer. Um, and it wouldn't, then, it wouldn't be a set amount. So it wouldn't be like you add snags and you go from 100 to 75 or 100 to 50. I think in just my general kind of proposed language, I said up to 25%. But I really don't think that in practice you would find that that was justifiable. Um, and it would sort of be up to the applicant and their consultant to, um, look at whatever the existing conditions are and then, um, you know, make, make their proposal and put forth their best argument. Um, let's see, there was another part to your question. Uh, da-da-da-da. Or maybe that was it. Did I, did I answer all the parts of your question?
Yes, thank you, Amy. It does seem like this is something that could potentially reduce the buffer below 75 feet as long as the city signed off on it, basically, for that class two wetland example I mentioned.
Um, if it was a category two, at least right now, the proposal is that it would be up to a 25% reduction. So it would be no less than 75. And I think that number could easily be cranked back up to no, you know, 25% was just what the current enhancement language allows, and so I just left that alone. I would think that a snag and large woody debris proposal, depending on the existing conditions, you know, wouldn't be worth more than, I don't know, a five or 10-foot reduction potentially. And I would also suspect that in a category two wetlands, that you are probably less likely to have a buffer condition that maybe lacks snags and large woody debris. Um, it, you'd be more likely, I think, to find these kinds of buffers on maybe category three or four wetlands, um, sort of the lower functioning wetlands. But again, it would be so site-specific and qualitative, and it would be up to the, um, consultant biologist, I think, to describe the existing conditions and make the case for how snags and large woody debris would improve buffer function. But yeah, I'm afraid I can't offer numbers.
Okay, Commissioner Gustafson?
Hi, I thought I understood it, but the more I listened, I realized I perhaps don't understand it. I think my concern is if you have a wetland of whatever qu- class, and it's already reduced to the minimum, given that the developer has perhaps done the other minimization measures, would they be able to put in a snag and then go below the already reduced minimum based on ecology standards?
Uh, only if they can make a good argument.
Okay, thank you.
And, yeah, and we, there is no set number that I had in mind.
Okay, thank you.
I guess I, I would like to clarify, though, that it's no more than 25% of whatever the, the buffer is. If, if they use the minimum minimization, uh, measures and it's a hundred-foot buffer, they couldn't go less than 75.
Okay, scanning across the commissioners. I do not see anyone else to question or comment, so I think we can proceed to the next slide.
I don't see it advancing yet, but, um, if you guys do, then this slide relates to the exemption. And there was, um, a question, I think, from one of the commissioners last time about whether this was consistent with best available science. And so I thought I would just, um, explain a little bit more, and I already did that in the memo, uh, the November 12 memo. And then just a note added to the slide that this was adapted from Department of Ecology's model code. Um, so it is, um, part of Ecology's best available science, and this was basically their language that I just modified for clarity. And then also, um, recognizing that the city, um, to date has been, you know, or the, the commissioners and council and shoreline board have been very, um, committed to the onsite in-kind. I did modify Ecology's language, which had referenced mitigation banks and in-loo fees, specifically as the preferred mechanism for compensating for any impacts to these wetlands. And I added, um, language suggesting that, you know, if you couldn't, uh, enhance a degraded wetland or if you weren't able to perhaps, uh, do some additional wetland creation sort of contiguous with an already existing wetland, then you would go to mitigation based in your in-loe fee. So that was the only tweak I really made to Ecology's code language. And I, also maybe, I don't know if you've read the detailed code itself. I think it was, I think it might have been in my October 28th letter. But, um, it is heavily qualified, that it only applies to, um, certain wetlands that are, you know, low-function, low-habitat points, isolated, um, those types of things. And you, and you would need to demonstrate that you meet all those criteria before you could take advantage of this exemption.
Are there any questions on this?
Commissioner Gustafson?
Hi, Amy. Um, I think I understand what we're saying about the wetlands that are under 4,000 square feet. But for the under 1,000 square feet, I'm sorry, it's hard to hear. So for the under 1,000 square feet, what are the, I don't see what the criteria are in order to eliminate the buffer requirement for that.
One second, I'm just pulling up the language, so I have it in front of me here. At least I am trying to. Okay, well, my, um, my computer is not cooperating, but let me go straight to the code. One, one second here. Bear with me while I pull up the section in Ecology's code here. David, my computer is not cooperating. Are you, are you able to pull up the analysis letter, perhaps? I think the code language is in that.
Uh, not without stopping to share.
Dave, I have the packet open, and I can share that part of the packet. Amy, if you can, you, you know what section that is? So if you stop sharing, Dave, I can share.
Yeah, I'm, okay. Okay.
Amy, you said that's in your memo? Amy, are you still with us?
Sorry, I was on mute. Yes, it's in October letter, not, not the memo.
Buffer analysis methods?
Um.
Actually, Mike, I think you were actually there before. Th- this is what Amy's referring to as the, the letter.
Okay. Are you able to? Puffers. Amy, can you see this?
Um, yes, but that doesn't look familiar. Um, what I'm seeing is something that has 1102 point 002 definitions at the top. Which is, um, not, not part of my letter.
Amy, are you talking about the, the memo that you sent in response to the questions from November 4th? Or the, uh, the earlier letter?
The earlier letter, the original October letter. And I, I'm just sort of drawing on memory until we can find it, but I think it refers to the, some of the same criteria that apply to the 4,000 square foot part of that exemption. But, uh.
This is the analysis section.
While you are scrolling, I see Commissioner Curd has his hand up.
This is Carsten. Uh, I think it's on page 21 of the packet.
And I'm there.
Limited exemptions?
Number two.
Amy, can you see that?
Oh, yes, okay, so it would be further, further down. Um, keep going. I think the, the screen is laid for me, but right now I do see the non buffer width section.
Okay, I'm under the limited exemptions, and item two states all I think the category four wetlands meeting criteria that are less than 1,000 square feet may be exempt from the buffer provisions contained in this chapter. A critical areas report for wetlands meeting the requirements in BMC 14.04.520 must be submitted that demonstrates that the wetland is eligible for this exemption by confirming that the above criteria are met.
Yes, so, yeah, I still can't quite, oh, there it is. Um, yeah, so it's referring to those same criteria above. So it's the immediate, you know, A, B, C, D still apply, um, in order to take advantage of this exemption for the wetlands that are less than 1,000 square feet. So same criteria, but different, um, different allowances for, based on if it's less than 4,000 and then additional allowance if it's also less than 1,000. But again, this is, this is based on Ecology's code with, with the one tweak that I mentioned that's trying to acknowledge the city preference for local mitigation versus using banks and in-loe fee. Okay. Is there any other questions on the exemption? I can't hear anyone right now. I don't know if anyone is speaking.
I don't see anyone else raising their hand, so let's proceed then to the next slide.
Okay, this is the mitigation slide?
Yes, okay. Um, so this slide, I didn't make any changes to, um, but just to sort of revisit that my suggestion was to, um, utilize. was to utilize what work was done as part of the Sherland Master Program in, in chapter 13 and then 1302 OG. However, my suggestion was to exclude some of the more specific limitations that present a barrier to use of mitigation banks and in lieu fee programs. And the next slide, I just added a little bit more kind of background on where the federal and state agencies are kind of headed. And some of this is very new information based on conversations that I just had over the last week with Department of Ecology and then reviewing in a little bit more detail this draft joint guidance. So are you seeing the slide that has the red bullet?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
General rule, draft guidance and ecology model code.
Yep, okay. So just a little bit of, of history on the evolution of, of this idea and the idea of hierarchies is that in 2008, the federal rule, so that's the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency in collaboration with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers issued a new rule with, about compensatory mitigation and how it should be cited and designed and, you know, a whole bunch of other sort of framework guidance for that. And that federal rule has a very explicit hierarchy for preferring mitigation banks, number one, and then in lieu fee after that is a preference for permutee responsible mitigation. So that would be just kind of your standard. Person comes in with a proposal, a development has an impact, and then that person is designing their own mitigation and then is implementing it. And so there's kind of three categories of permutee responsible. The most preferred being that the permutee is using a watershed approach to locate and design that particular mitigation. In the draft, the draft joint guidance that's mentioned is currently being updated. And this joint guidance is a collaboration between the EPA, the Corps of Engineers, and then the Department of Ecology. And it's a very robust, detailed expansive document that I think the last version of is from 2006. And they're updating it right now and it's available for review on their website. And in my memo, I provide links to this document as well as the federal rule. And the Department of Ecology is generally going in a direction that's consistent with the federal rule, which makes sense, but they are taking a more flexible approach and focusing instead of on a hierarchy, like a very strong hierarchy, more a practice of laying out, here's all the different options for mitigation, everything from mitigation banks and in lieu fee down to permutee responsible mitigation and requiring that applicants present an analysis basically that demonstrates that their proposal is the best ecological choice. And in many, many circumstances, that would be a mitigation bank or an in lieu fee program, but then there is also acknowledgement that there are other circumstances certainly where onsite or in kind or in basin might be the best ecological choice. So they're getting away from the strong hierarchy in the joint guidance. And Department of Ecology has also got a model code, which they produced in 2016, and they are currently at the very beginning stages of updating that. And I was told by folks at Ecology this week and late last week that it's basically going to be kind of a Cliff Notes version of this joint guidance document. So similarly, it's going to be sort of stepping away from the strong hierarchy, which in their current code, the current model code is a little bit stronger on preferring onsite in kind and then unless you can demonstrate that offsite is better. So they're steering clear of, of that and instead focusing on presenting all the array of options and then having a, a very considered process where people demonstrate which option is the best and then put that proposal forward. And so in my letter, my October letter, and then I think in my memo, I haven't said, you know, Bothell must do away with their hierarchy and their preferences, but I would just, for the sake of consistency with the federal rule and the joint guidance, just make sure that we are not overly constraining use of mitigation banks and in lieu fees and, and providing, you know, limitations on them that might present a real barrier to a project that, where it just doesn't make sense for a number of reasons for them to pursue, you know, a more local solution. And in particular, I think that's going to be the case for larger, you know, infrastructure projects, public infrastructure projects, like transportation projects and maybe schools or utilities. There have been scenarios, and I just heard about one earlier this week, I think just yesterday or the day before, where applicants have been sort of caught between a local government's code that is very strong on onsite in kind and then the federal Army Corps of Engineers hierarchy, which is mitigation banks first, and you'd better be ready to prove that your proposal is better than a mitigation bank. And I have run into this myself on a road project, a public roads project in the city of Samamish, and it was an incredibly uphill battle in order to be able to do the onsite mitigation, even though we had lots of sort of backup and some other kind of basin plan documents that talked about how that was a desirable and beneficial restoration spot. And it was connected to, you know, listed species, there's listed species downstream. So, and I've also heard that there are folks who have been stuck in a situation where they had to do both. They had to do the mitigation bank because the Corps was not convinced by the arguments for the onsite in kind, but to satisfy the local jurisdiction regulations, they had to come up with some kind of an onsite in kind solution as well. So they were mitigating twice and going through that process and all the expense twice. Maybe I'll just leave there and see if you have any further questions at this point.
Let's pause for a moment. I see Commissioner Olson has her hand up.
Thank you, Chair. This is Amanda Wilson. I was wondering, when somebody is caught between federal and local guidelines like that, is that, I'm assuming that's not every project. So I guess my questions are, what kinds of projects would that occur on? And then are they common in Bothell?
Okay, that's a, that's a good question. So the federal rule and only applies really if you are impacting a wetland directly and it is in U.S. Army Corps of Engineers jurisdiction, and so you need a Corps permit. So many wetland fills in Bothell would definitely be facing that scenario. There are, if you're an isolated wetland, say just a little wetland and it's like on a hill and you don't have any kind of direct surface connection to more, you know, permanent water body, a stream, or, you know, some other larger wetland system, then you might only be dealing with Department of Ecology and your local regulations. And Department of Ecology will be using this joint guidance document that they're developing, and that would be, in addition to some of their other guidance documents, that would be what you would be having to demonstrate consistency with. So ecology is, is more friendly to putting, you know, the best case forward, and if that happens to be offsite in kind and you can make a great case for that, then I think you're in good shape. If that same project, if it was subject to the Corps, again, would just have a real difficult time working through the Corps permitting process.
Can I take this to Dr. Cotterman? Dr. Cotterman, did you have a comment?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. I just wanted to follow up on, on what Amy was talking about on Commissioner Olson's question. So I've already been contacted by one of the entities that has a regional mitigation bank that's been working with Sound Transit and WashDOT on some major transportation projects that will be in Bothell, at least partly in Bothell. So it, it could affect those projects. So those are a couple of major projects. I know the 404.5 expansion, for example, the express toll lane project, which then ties into the Sound Transit BRT and possibly the bus base. I'm not sure if it was specific to that. We didn't talk about particular projects, but just wanted to let you know that is something that's already come up.
Okay, Commissioner Olson.
Thank you. I think I have, I know I have some concerns about, I know that as a, as a commission, we, we definitely have expressed a preference for local mitigation, but I, I don't know that I'm convinced that that is going to outweigh kind of the, the logistical nightmare that has been described there. So I guess I'm very curious what the other commissioners are thinking with regard to that, because I'm definitely rethinking personally. Thank you.
Commissioner Aldrich.
My understanding, so Jenny Aldrich here, my understanding is that the, the federal guidelines from U.S. Army Corps of Engineer are coming up to with some changes that will, will exist soon-ish. And, and so if I understand correctly, some, we are kind of in like this uncertain time where those, like mitigation efforts that are, that are, sorry, the banking efforts that are recommended may, may change. And so that's what I kind of want to verify with Amy, that if, is that accurate? Is there a chance or is it likely that the, the banking recommendations will change? And how might that alter the proposal that you are offering here?
Yes, so I, I think that there's kind of been a swing over the years, you know, a long time ago, it was all onsite in kind, and then mitigation banks and in lieu fee kind of rose up and it swung very hard in that direction. And I think that's reflected in the federal rule, which is back in 2008. And I think we're kind of coming back now to a more central position, which I believe is where Department of Ecology is heading, which has a little bit more flexibility and thinking a little bit more, you know, watershed level and also, also thinking about sort of local needs and that sort of thing. So I don't, I don't feel like there's going to be a great big shift in what I'm thinking about doing here in terms of maybe trying to be, again, a little more flexible or a lot more flexible on the mitigation banking and in lieu fee as being an available tool. And I think anytime you, you have a wetland fill, you've got three levels of government looking at it. And so there's, there's going to be a lot of scrutiny of any proposal, whether it is to use a bank or it's to use onsite or in kind or, you know, some other sort of local solution. So I think the process that any applicant is going to go through is probably going to end up with, you know, hopefully the right results from an ecological perspective. I didn't propose any specific code yet, other than in my, in the letter, I suggested that we would sort of piggyback off of what has been done for, in the SMP, but remove some of the, the restraints and constraints on the mitigation banking and in lieu fee, just so it, it is not so hard for an applicant to work through that process and, and get there. I, so I think that's something we still maybe need to craft a little bit, and it really depends on, I think, the direction, you know, we hear tonight. We could keep, we could still keep your, you know, the preference that you've established, but maybe tweak some of the, just make it a little bit more flexible. Or you could do something a little more robust and try and steer away from having a, a real rigid hierarchy at all and just focus on encouraging people to, you know, use the ecology guidance documents and, you know, provide a very reasoned, science-based approach to their proposal. So there, I think there's still a couple of options and it's kind of probably your call on which way to go. And I, I think there's, I think we can, I think both would be defensible.
So, I see Commissioner Augustin, but a question first, probably for staff. Could you tell me how the fee and lieu works as opposed to the mitigation bank? Where does the fee money go other than to a bank?
I'll take a start at that, but I, I think Amy can probably provide more detail. The, there are, state-approved fee and lieu programs. It's not a, the city of Bothell does not have a fee and lieu program. So the fee and lieu option would be through the King County program, which has been established and vetted by Ecology.
And how is that different then from the mitigation bank?
So a mitigation bank is typically, it's already, it's been constructed and it went through a long process of review and design and multiple agencies involved for a specific large site. And credits are only available to be, you know, sold or traded for impact once it's been constructed and has gone through, you know, a certain amount of growth and development and kind of proves that it's meeting its performance standards, and then it's available for, for, for sale. An in lieu fee program typically has a lot more kind of a suite of different projects around a certain area, and they collect the money that you pay in, and then they would implement the project once they've assembled sufficient funds from, you know, a number of different applicants and folks proposing to use the program. So the timing is a little bit different, but in this case, as, as David said, the King County has got its mitigation reserve program, and they are still working on their kind of menu of sites. And I mentioned in the memo, I think that the closest one right now is, is still way down in Issaquah Creek system. So there isn't currently a in lieu fee project site near Bothell or up in this area of the watershed. There is, the mitigation bank that has already been constructed is in wooden, or no, it's in city of Redmond, and that's Keller Farm, and that's a big 75 acre site at the confluence of two salmon-bearing streams that are ultimately tributary to the Samamish River. So it's the proximity and the, the direct kind of linkage benefit to the city of Bothell and the Samamish River system is a little stronger. And the King County's program, you could only use it, applicants within the King County part of Bothell are the only ones that would have that even as an option. And I, I think I mentioned in the memo too, that in my past conversations with, with King County, the program folks, they're always looking for project opportunities and are looking for, you know, city partners to, you know, develop new projects. So I think that's, you know, something if the city of Bothell was interested, and I think Ann had mentioned a number of projects maybe that came out of the surface water master planning process. And so maybe there's some opportunities there for Bothell to actually bring an in lieu fee project to the city.
Okay, Commissioner Augustin.
Thank you, Chair. Sarah Augustin here. I think so far in these conversations, my bias is towards using the ecology language as much as possible, the Washington Department of Ecology language, kind of off the shelf as it were, because it might've already been vetted and tested for unintended consequences. I think this is a tricky one, because it sounds like we don't have the new ecology guidance on mitigation yet, so we can't write it in without knowing what it's going to say. So my questions are first, when will we get that new language? I saw it was 2021. Can we guess at it? Can we guess at it well enough to adopt it for our purposes as opposed to just taking out the shoreline language? So the question, the first question is when? And then the second question is, do you know who makes that determination of best ecological choice? So when and who? Thank you.
Yeah, so in my conversations with Department of Ecology, they have said basically that the model code that they're going to be, you know, they've just now started working on and they weren't able to, you know, even share kind of a early, early working draft with me, because it's just, they're just not there yet, was going to be based very closely on the draft joint guidance, which is available and is online, but it doesn't have that specific model code language. But I think all of the, sort of the principles and the direction and the science basis is all there. And there's several folks at Ecology that have been really great, I think, at collaborating with the city. And so, you know, I don't want to put words in David's mouth, but I would assume that we would craft something and, you know, maybe float it past a couple of those wetland biologists that are actually working on these two documents and get some feedback. But I, I do think that just waiting for the ecology model code to be available would, would really be a delay that would sort of hold up implementation of important changes that, that should be made in the code fairly urgently.
Commissioner Augustin.
Okay, thank you. I think that answers the when question. And then the question is, do we know under either the draft guidance or the ecology code that's getting worked on? Who makes that decision or who has the burden of proof of best ecological choice? Is it the applicant who says, yes, I've determined best ecological choice, it's this? Try to refute me. Or is it the city that says, yes, well, we've looked at all the options they suggested and we think this one is the best ecological choice? Is it the state? Is it the feds? It's.
Yeah, okay. Gotcha, yeah, sorry, I missed, I missed that part of the question. So it would start with the applicant and their biologist putting their best case forward and their ecological rationale for their choice, looking at all the different options that are available. And then I think the city would be, you know, again, you have to, if you are impacting a wetland, and let's just presume it's a core jurisdictional wetland, so Army Corps of Engineers is involved, you're going to have the Corps and Department of Ecology and the city independently reviewing and having opportunity to comment on, on the plan. So I think the city could approve it. And again, as David mentioned, I think the city has on-call consultants that would help the city review the applicant's proposal and, you know, determine whether it's sound or not. But Department of Ecology and the Corps of Engineers are going to be going through that same process. And if the Corps doesn't agree, then it's kind of back to the drawing board. Or if the city happened not to agree, you know, then again, you know, back to the drawing board. And it, it's just, it's always been tricky, I think, for applicants to try and, and develop a proposal that will satisfy all the agencies. And unfortunately, it's getting a little trickier with the, kind of the separation between the federal rule and then the direction that I think that the state and local governments have been going or, and are going unavoidably, unfortunately. Unless that federal rule were to be updated at some point in the future. And I haven't heard that that's underway. But, you know, it wouldn't surprise me if at some point it does kind of swing back more towards the middle and this more balanced approach that I think the Department of Ecology is pursuing.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Augustin.
I, thank you. One last question and then I'll pause for a bit. I think it's Sarah Augustin here. I was interested to hear more about the group of third-party biologists that the city has on staff, like a team of folks who can really help us out here. My question on those folks is, the fees that the city pays them to do this, is this covered by the applicant fully or does this come elsewhere from the city budget?
I believe that is part of their application fee covers those, those costs. Oh.
Thank you.
Commissioner Olson.
Thank you. Kind of a follow-up to my earlier question, based on all the discussion that we've had since. Is there a way to sort of craft our code and guidelines to say, you know, we like what the State Department of Ecology is doing, prefer that, but if somebody's really caught in the middle, we'll back off and let them go with what the Corps of Engineers? Like, is there a way we can kind of play the middle ground so that we're not putting them between three different entities? Maybe with director discretion or something like that, so that it's not just a free-for-all? I hope I'm clear. I don't think I'm very clear.
Oh, can I take a first bracket that?
Sure.
So I, I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Olson. I, I think that, you know, what, what you're suggesting is that we build something into our code that provides some sort of a relief valve for applicants when they're caught between two or among three different jurisdictions that have regulatory authority. And I'll defer to Amy, but it seems to me that we wouldn't have to write it explicitly so much as to, just to make sure that we provide some flexibility in the code, acknowledging, you know, that that situation may exist. But I guess I would recommend some caution that we also don't want to preemptively give away our authority to regulate in all instances either. So there's a, it's a challenging area to try to sift through exactly what, what the situation would be, because I think it will vary on a case-by-case basis. I don't know, Amy, if you have any experience dealing with that in other jurisdictions?
Yeah. For projects that just get stuck, it just, in my experience so far, it just, it kept turning into having to produce more and more study and more and more, you know, documentation and more and more arguments. But I think it's an interesting idea, but I, I think, like you said too, just sort of being explicit about unless the Corps says it has to be a mitigation bank, you know, then fine, maybe isn't the way to go. But I, I do think that if we craft it appropriately and there's the flexibility and everyone's target is the best ecological choice, that hopefully that would just lend itself naturally to less conflict and tension between the agencies and everyone seeing that, yes, X, Y, or Z is actually the best approach for the particular project. That, that would be my hope, anyway.
And I think, this is Mike Cotterman again. I think what I would, from what I understand what you're saying, Amy, what I would envision is similar to what you were describing earlier, which is a little bit of a modification to provide more flexibility in the hierarchy that we have in our code. So as I understand our code right now, it's a rather rigid hierarchy that says, first you have to do this and before you can consider the next one, you have to demonstrate that you can't do the first one. So if there's a way to write something in terms of the flexibility that allows us to maybe jump through that, those hoops a little bit faster, using some more flexible criteria to say, under these circumstances, you know, you may consider other options as long as they're, again, meeting that, you know, the best ecological outcomes.
Yeah, that, I think, exactly, because it, it does seem like you could spend a lot of energy dismissing things that, that you kind of know in the end are, are not going to be appropriate or are not feasible for your particular project or situation. And, and it would be nice to have a, a way to, you know, move, move through that process more quickly and, and, you know, jump ahead to where you know you need to go, you know, depending on your situation. And this is particularly true, again, I think, for linear transportation projects or utility projects or other kinds of public infrastructure, schools and that kind of thing that have got, you know, a lot of very site-specific requirements and they don't have opportunities as much as, say, a residential development or a commercial development to modify where they put different components or how they use the space. You know, one less, one less home is very different from, oh, well, now I can't have a ball field that I need, you know, because an elementary school needs to have X square feet of recreational space or whatever the rule is. So, but I do think it would be nice to figure out a way to put kind of that kind of flexibility and, and maybe there's, you know, certain justifications you need to provide. But I, I think we can come up with, you know, a reasonable approach that will kind of meet everybody's needs, but not give away the farm either.
Commissioner Aldrich.
Jenny Aldrich here. Thank you, Amy, for trying to like thread that needle. It sounds, sounds complicated in terms of all of the, the different stakeholders that have, have eyes on it and have a say in it. I'd like to, I'd like to just get some verification if I'm understanding this correctly. It sounds to me like, just in general, we are looking to provide, but we're looking to require enhancements to certain, to certain areas and we're providing them guidance. So we're, so we're providing a firm, an entity, guidance for those enhancements. And then the firm then proposes what those enhancements are. And then those have to be approved by the city, the state ecology and Army Corps of Engineers. And the ideal outcome of this, that the impact is that they are, they have an action that meets the best ecological outcome. Is that, am I understanding this correctly? Can you help me there?
I. Go ahead, Amy.
I would say, I think that's it in a nutshell. The applicant, and this only applies, this, this process we're talking about is explicitly for folks who, even after they've gone through the mitigation sequencing process and, you know, done everything they can, you know, within reason to avoid filling the wetland in the first place. But ultimately, they do need to propose some wetland fill. Then yes, they present their case. The city's code would provide, you know, sufficient guidance and some standards about how they present that case and what they need to consider so that they could do that. And then the city would review that as well as all the other agencies, depending on the project. And hopefully, yes, the final outcome is the, the best ecological solution to compensate for those impacts. Is that what you said?
Yes, yes, thank you so much. I, I really do appreciate you kind of confirming that for me. Because then my question is, after all of that, which sounds exhausting to any one entity who has to go through that whole process, then what kind of follow-up and compliance is required to make sure that they, they did what they said they were going to do and what they had been approved to do?
Yeah, I can tackle part of that, but I imagine that David or Michael will want to add to that. So for, for any of these proposals, if you're doing, if you're doing your own mitigation as an applicant, you're not using a bank or an in lieu fee program, then chances are good, if you're doing wetland fill, that you're going to have 10 years of monitoring and maintenance requirements. And you'll be reporting to the city, to Department of Ecology and to the Corps annually or whatever the set schedule is. Oftentimes, it's like years one, two, three, five, seven, and 10 on the progress of your mitigation site. And whether you're achieving the established performance standards, which include things like, how is, you know, the native vegetation? Is it, how are the invasive species progressing on the side? Or are they staying under 10% cover? You know, all those types of things. And then lately, the, I think the Corps, and it's a little bit hit or miss on whether they apply it, but they may also require that the property be put into a formal conservation easement or some other sort of a legal mechanism that is supposed to protect it in perpetuity. But more rigorous, you know, actual monitoring and maintenance activities would typically cease at that 10-year point. And I, I think the city's code may require some of that as well anyway, like putting it in the tract or recording it on title or some other sort of, of legal recording of the mitigation site. For mitigation banks and in lieu fee, those come sort of prepackaged and the person that is managing and develops the mitigation bank, they are responsible for all of the maintenance and monitoring and reporting to the agencies for the bank as a whole or the in lieu fee project. So the applicant doesn't, you know, if you're an applicant and you've paid into the bank or an in lieu fee program, then you're just done once you've done that. You don't have to worry about it anymore and keep, keep maintaining the site because it's not yours. And I, I think David maybe can speak more to the, kind of the enforcement angle of that.
Well, I just wanted to confirm that we do require that these be put in tracts. So, and that runs with the land. So, so while the active monitoring and enforcement may end at 10 years, it's, it, it remains in a tract that needs to be maintained in perpetuity.
So any other Commissioner comments or questions? Commissioner Aldrich.
Jenny Aldrich here. Okay, so maybe I'm on the roll. The, what I'm hearing is after, after an action's been approved, there is, there's monitoring and reviews. The outcome is, you know, you intend that they're meeting, they're meeting their benchmarks that you described and, and adjusting as necessary within those 10 years to hit those benchmarks. And by the end, you have an established ecology and a routine for maintenance of, of this, of the area that they've enhanced. I think, I think that's accurate. You could verify for me. And then my question to follow that is, what, I, what incentive is there for a firm to engage in this process when it sounds much simpler to do the in lieu or the banking? And so if we want to incentivize firms, and by firm, I mean anybody who's, you know, on the hook for this, if we want to incentivize them to do their own enhancements, what could we do and would we even want to? Those are my questions.
I don't, I don't know that you would want to try and incentivize. I mean, ecologically speaking, I don't think you'd want to skew people one way or the other to go towards banking or away from banking, unless that just happened to be the right solution anyway. But there are, I think mitigation banking and in lieu fee can be pretty spendy upfront. And so that can make onsite or, you know, a more local permitee, does it kind of mitigation seem better in the short term? Because the, the upfront cost is less. But then the 10 years of maintenance and monitoring, provided it's actually completed, that can really stack up over time. Plus, the applicant bears the burden of risk in those type of situations. So if you, you know, there's, there are places where it's just really difficult. Either they don't do the maintenance or there's just underlying conditions that make it very difficult to meet your performance standards. And so you might have, you know, multiple rounds of replanting or chemical treatment of invasive species and mechanical treatment of invasive species. Or, you know, something could happen with your hydrology and you thought you were going to get three acres of wetland and you ended up with one and a half. So, so there's a lot more risk to that as well. So if you weren't thinking about ecology, I, I'm not sure how people really decide which way to go, other than penciling it out and thinking about long-term costs and risk and, and then what they have an appetite for, I guess. And for, for some agencies in particular, like a, a. And for, for some agencies in particular, like a, a utility or a transportation facility, again, thinking about kind of linear projects where you might have three or four or five impacts on one project distributed over, um, you know, a longer corridor, then I think that makes the mitigation banks and INLU fee a lot more attractive because then they might have to try and create and manage and monitor and maintain and, and have the risk of these multiple mini mitigation sites, you know, scattered on the landscape as well. Versus just consolidate, writing a check and being done with the whole thing.
Dr. Cotman, do you have a comment on this?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, Mike Cotman, just a more of a time check, uh, because I know we've got another large item on the agenda this evening. I want to cut off conversation. It's important that we get direction from the commission. So I, I have a question to Dave and Amy as to whether we've gotten all the questions that we had answered. And then to make sure that we've answered all the commissioners' questions, this will be coming back to you. So this is not the last opportunity. But I also want to make sure that everyone's aware we've got another major item on the agenda this evening.
This is an action item tonight.
Yeah, and I was just about to jump in and, and try to wrap this up. What I think I'm hearing is that there, uh, there is interest in trying to find a, a middle ground that, and similar to, uh, kind of following ecology's lead in their effort to negotiate their new guidance to, uh, to provide some flexibility and avoid the conflicts that have come up between jurisdictions with, um, with overly tight offsite mitigation regulations and the Corps. So what I would propose is we would, um, or Amy would go back to the drafting board and come back to you with some, uh, some draft language, perhaps some options to present. We've talked about bringing this back on December 16th. And, um, potentially in public hearing, we, we may have, uh, some more work to do before we're ready for that. So I think we need to, uh, discuss among ourselves whether, whether that would be a, would make sense to do in a public hearing or a continued study session. But that's, that's what I'm hearing now.
So any other questions or comments from commissioners, Mr. Gustafson?
Thank you, Chair. Sarah Gustafson here. I think this sounds like a good idea going forward. I would ask that perhaps if we see some new draft language, that we could also see the draft guidance language side by side. I know the link is there, but sometimes it's just hard for me to navigate to the exact analog. So I bet if we could see it side by side and compare the language, it might help us come to a better agreement. I don't know if there are any other languages that people might want to bring in. For example, the existing shoreline language. But for me, it just helps to see where we're kind of moderating between. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments, questions? So I've heard that suggestion for our next one. So hearing none, I would suppose we end this, uh, study session on the critical area, regulation code amendments. I think we should probably take a 10-minute break before we move on. I see a little hidden on the screen. And then reconvene at exactly, I see 7:35 on my screen now, so it's 7:45, so that we can move through the other item. All right, so we will adjourn, or we will take a 10-minute break starting now. So thank you, commissioners, and I will count down when we return for our. Live.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'm going to ask Rachel if she would alert the rest of our consultant team that's going to be joining us this evening, that will be back in 10 minutes. That's why I've been muting you.
Okay, I thought I'd been muting myself as well, but.
You have, you've been pretty good about it. There's, there was a couple of times though.
I'm the only one upstairs, so.
Yeah, no, it, it sounds like it's in the, in the electronics and so.
I can't talk for some reason because you're not using a headset. Yeah, so it's like picking up what your speaker's putting out for some reason.
I think you did mention it during the meeting. So we're waiting for Sarah and then we can reconvene. Close the door even though the dog doesn't like it.
Rachel, has Bob joined us?
He should be. He texted back saying he's joining.
I don't see him yet.
I did let him know that I was going first.
Okay. And I believe, I'm guessing that Boffel Virtual Host 5 is Steve? Okay, thanks, Steve.
That will give Sarah a little bit more. And this is another study session, no action. Well, I think maybe we should just get started and, oh, there she is. All right, I'm going to do the countdown for going on air. So we are ready in 10, 9, 8, 7, 6, 5, 4, 3, 2, 1. So this is the City of Boffel Planning Commission meeting, uh, November 18, 2020, reconvening after a break, uh, picking up our next item on the study session, the Canyon Park Development Regulations. So, Dr. Cotman, I think you'll begin leading this discussion.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. So tonight we have on the call as well, to help us walk us through all of this, Rachel Miller and Bob Bangford from Makers Architecture, also Mike Stanger from Arch and Steve Morikawa from our Public Works Department. So we have two items that were in your packet this evening that we wanted to go over with you. The first item Rachel's going to walk us through, and that's, if you recall, a few meetings ago, we, we brought you the, the list of direction that the commission had given us on the, on the draft plan. And this summarizes what that direction was and what actions have been taken to, to incorporate that. And then Bob and I, with Mike and Rachel's help, will walk through, and Steve's help, will walk through the decision matrix that's also included in your packet as attachment two. And that's to highlight some of the things that we've already done, just to remind you the things that have been decided by the commission. And then to highlight a few new items that we've included in there and then talk about a couple more that are still outstanding, that we think we can defer until some later date. So with that, I will turn it over to Rachel to walk us through the first item, and I will put that up on the screen. Rachel?
Thank you. Good to see you all again and thanks for having us here. As Mike mentioned, this is the, um, chart that we're using to track direction from you all and how we're addressing it, mostly in the sub-area plan, although there are some notes about how it's addressed in the regulations. And of course, those are becoming more and more consistent every day. So I won't go through every topic again, since we've already discussed this before. But if you see something that you want to raise, then I think it's okay to ask questions about it. But if it's all right, Mike, we could just scroll on through to our first edit. So there are two highlights here that note specific edits that you all asked for. So the first one is. So there are two highlights here that note, um, specific edits that you all asked for. So the first one is, um, in the action that we had added about addressing social equity impacts, we did emphasize engagement. We added some specific language there to emphasize engagement, community engagement, um, with the impacted community members. So that's addressing the affordable commercial space, cultural anchors, um, social equity lens work, uh, that you all had asked us to add. So we got that in the draft that we're working on now. And so if we can scroll on through to the next highlight. Okay, so the next one is about building efficiency and by that we mean green building, um, solar panels, that kind of thing. Uh, so there was an action in there already and we did strengthen it by adding the word incentivize, given that direction. So that change has been made. And then there's one other new action that didn't come from Planning Commission direction. Um, but we added it because it's needed by, um, the PSRC, Puget Sound Regional Council. Um, their requirements for the Regional Growth Center, um, their guidance asks us, asks for a mode share split and target. So we now have a little section in there that addresses what the current mode share is. So how many people are in single occupancy vehicles, uh, today? And versus non-single occupancy vehicles, so using transit or pedestrian, walking, rolling, um, car pools. And then a goal for twenty forty-four, um, so shifting more people out of single occupant cars. So that's the only addition. And then we are also just, as I mentioned earlier, making all of our products more consistent. So that just means minor tweaks here and there, but no change in direction. And that's it.
So, scan any, oh, question?
This is Carson. Uh, hi Rachel, I'm wondering how the mode share or actually when the mode share is being, um, kind of taken, is it pre-pandemic or during pandemic? What's the baseline?
The baseline was pre-pandemic. It was using PSRC data that they already had together. Um, I can check on the exact year, but it was starting within eighty-five percent single occupancy vehicles and fifteen percent non-SOBE.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner comments or questions? Okay, I think we can proceed then.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the next item is the, uh, the code decision matrix. And again, this is a summary of changes that have been made, uh, based on previous direction from the commission and those are highlighted in the comments column on the right, as well as some new items that we've put in. And I'm just gonna go through this rather quickly. And if there, I'll stop at a couple of points. If there are any particular questions, we're happy to, to answer those. So the first item you see in yellow under definitions is adding a definition to the code for artisan manufacturing, because that is something that will be allowed, uh, in certain sections of the, uh, of the sub-area. So I'll leave that for a second, so people can just look through it quickly.
Mike, listen, uh, Jenny, thank you, uh, Chair. I'm wondering, can you, um, put this into presentation mode perhaps? It's pretty small for on the share screen. That might, I don't know if that's possible, but, um, at least zoom in so we can see it better.
That I can do. I know there's a presentation mode. This is something that, uh.
Thank you.
I've been able to increase the size. There's a bar on the left side of my screen. And of course means I lose the bottom of it when you're talking.
Yeah.
You can also usually press Ctrl L.
Thank you. And now we gotta get out of this screen.
Yeah, yeah.
How do I get out of this screen? There we are. Okay, Ctrl L?
Yes.
Oh, no, that asked if I wanna leave the meeting. I don't think I'm allowed to do that. Okay, I'll, I'll make it bigger. How's that? Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
Move it over a little bit? Yes, thank you for, thank you for doing that. I know there's a presentation mode on here somewhere. And for the life of me, I am not seeing it.
I, I think that looks good. Just recognize the, oops.
I did it again. I know, I did it again. Okay. Okay, did everyone have a chance to review the, the definition? And this was in your packet as well, so I'm, I'm presuming that, uh, everyone has had a chance to look at it there. And I don't wanna dwell on any of these too long unless there are specific questions.
I think I see Commissioner Alderks seeking to ask a question.
Thank you, Chair. Um, Jenny Alderks here. Uh, if you could scroll up a little bit, uh, one, one question I might be obvious. Uh, but for example, would a, um, a blow, like a glass blowing, uh, studio also fall into this? And, or is that, would that be excluded from it because it's beyond small scale light mechanical equipment?
I, no, I believe the intent is for that to be included.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I think that's exactly the type of thing.
It's necessarily broad enough to include lots of artisans.
That's the intent, yes.
Yes.
Bob, did you wanna add anything to that?
No, no, that's, that is the intent and as long as it's within that five thousand square feet, the, it doesn't have, uh, big and external impacts and everything's indoors. That's, that's the, the intent and the focus there. To make sure that those types of things are, are allowed.
And my recollection, Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't have the use chart in front of me, but I think this is allowed in, in all of the zones, is it not?
That's correct.
And I would think the language typical uses does not limit it to those examples.
Correct.
Okay. Moving on, this was language that you saw last time and there's one minor correction there to the labeling. Under applicability, again, this is information. Um, there've been some clarifications to this based on, uh, in response to some comments received from the Canyon Park Business Center Owners Association. Did not change the, uh, the intent. Really just to, uh, clarify where it applies. And Bob, I don't know if you wanna say anything in particular about that?
Sure, sure, I can. So a lot of this depends on, uh, we looked at, we talked about some hypothetical examples of some sites. And some larger sites that could have multiple buildings where maybe you add on to one. And some of the additions can be sizable and still be on this, uh, level or type two addition. And, um, in some cases like, uh, where we show all these through block connections, there could be, uh, an example where a through block connection is in the area or right on where they're doing an addition. And so there may be cases there where simply doing the addition would necessitate, uh, doing some improvements for such a through block connection. And so, uh, that's why we use the language there. It's, it's impossible really to make the language black and white. So that's why we, um, we do a delicate dance there on, um, on some of the language. So we say where the addition is located in the immediate area of such a through block connection shown in the figure. And then C involves the block frontage standards. So there may be cases when you do an addition out from the building and maybe the addition is towards the street and sort of, you know, within twenty feet of the street or, or maybe even right up to the street edge. So in that case, you would need to conform to the block frontage standards, whether, whether it's a primary designation or, uh, I believe a secondary designation. And so that would impact, uh, maybe some landscaping or the amount of transparency, uh, or the location of the entrance. So those were just things that as we looked into this more and got more questions, we felt that, okay, those were, these were some clarifications that we felt we needed to add.
Any questions about?
Not seeing any questions. I think we can proceed.
So this next one was, um, this is the vesting that we've talked about and this has the specific language in it. And I wanna give a special thank you to Chair Kiernan for catching something that no one else who looked at this caught. We did not change this right here. Needs to say Canyon Park Subarea instead of Downtown Subarea. So I'm going to have Chair Kiernan proof everything that I do from now on because she always finds these things. But this is the recommended, this is the recommended language. Um, this, we vetted this with legal staff and, uh, as you heard from a speaker earlier this evening, Mr. Morrison representing Juno Therapeutics. Uh, this is what they were requesting. The main thing that we added beyond what they had originally proposed was Act Two, which is the project is a qualifying land use as defined by the Planned Action Ordinance. Uh, and we felt this is important because this is a planned action, sub-area plan. And we wanted to make sure that anything that was included in this, um, would, would qualify under those provisions as well. Make sure they're covered in EIS. And they would have until, uh, September thirtieth of next year to submit an application, providing they're a qualifying land use and that they've had a formal pre-application meeting, uh, prior to the regulations going into effect. There are three projects that I'm aware of that would qualify under these, uh, provisions. One is the Juno Therapeutics project. They've had a pre-application. The other is, uh, the, the property, the, what we call the TIAA property, which is the project Roger Blannett has talked about right here, if you can see my cursor. The ORM designation. Um, they have a pre-application, um, on file that was conducted for apartment development there. And then the third would be the fire station rebuild, which is right here. There may be some others, but those are the only ones that I'm aware of at this time. So just, this next one is just for information purposes. I guess I should probably stop on the vesting just to make sure. Is that what? I know we've talked about it before and the commission, you seem to be comfortable with the direction we were headed, just to make sure that there aren't any questions or concerns with what's proposed.
Well, it was good to hear that we, you were able to reach, uh, a, a solution that's agreeable to Juno that meets their needs, so I compliment our city on that.
Okay, just, as we've been going through and certain things we've been refining, uh, we found some boundary issues with some of the zones. So with those have been corrected on the map. This, uh, the use table, these were changes that were made last time that the commission approved the recommendations. The next item is for informational purposes. This has to do with the minimum base FARs. And these were adjusted upwards as we talked about, uh, to eighty-five feet and no more than seven stories, consistent with the SEPA analysis. And at this point, we had also talked about, um, a bonus incentive system tied in with either affordable housing or TDR or, uh, other potential incentives. And I think I've got a little bit more later on that as well, but that's enough that we're going to defer. And, yeah, we do have the FAR coming up a little bit later, Bob, so you can talk about the other changes that we discussed today. And then these are the density and dimensional regulations. Again, this was reviewed and, and recommended, uh, approved last time by the commission. And the next item, I'm gonna defer to Bob. There's a couple of things that are highlighted in here. The commission approved last time. We talked about a request, a specific request from, uh, Life Science Washington, representing several, um, biotech, uh, medical device companies that asked for the base FAR and the maximum building height be put back to, I'm sorry, they asked for the building height to be put back to a hundred feet, which the commission agreed to. As staff was reviewing this and looking at the implications, we felt we also needed to increase the FAR from point six to one point O to coincide with, uh, that height increase. And then Bob, did you wanna talk about the, um, the other items on here?
I think you've covered it. I think that's, that's all.
Were we increasing?
I believe those were the same from last time because we haven't highlighted them here.
Correct. At the email exchange we had today, you had a question about whether those were supposed to be increased based on previous discussion that we had had.
Oh, I think that was prob- perhaps internal, um, I should have mentioned that in the email, that, um, there was some debate. We, we had talked about, um, remember from several meetings ago that I presented a model, uh, from the three D models, it kind of explained how the FAR works and, and that really it's, it's, it's reasonably hard to get up to those FARs. Um, and we had, we had already previously made some adjustments, particularly after we, uh, there was some agreement to do the mandatory affordable housing. And so I think with that change, we ended up, um, increasing the maximum base. And then again, you can see that you can go above and beyond those maximums, uh, to get to, uh, these, uh, FAR extra bonus incentives on top of that. So the one area that we were looking at closer was the RMUM and the ORM, which had the one point seven five, um, maximum. And, um, I just, I had some notes from a staff meeting that led me to believe we, there was some thinking about going up to two point O there. Uh, but we didn't end up making that change. Um.
Okay, so we're not proposing any additional change at this time.
Correct.
Okay. You, you can tell we, we rehearsed this very, very carefully today. Uh, next item also related to FAR is the minimum FAR applicability. And this is another one that we've talked about previously. And the commission had, uh, had approved similar language before. And what this is showing is a change, and this is again, based on some further discussions with the Business Park Owners Association. They were asking about a certain situation that we felt was covered, but this is probably a, a clearer way to address it. It changes the language here in A to rather than not decreasing, just to that the, the, whatever is built on the site would have to increase the FAR with the new structure. We took out the reference to a new structure, not replacing an existing structure because that seemed, there didn't seem to be a situation where that was likely to occur, uh, without an increase in the FAR. But then we kept the one, and I think this is an important one about that it could not be part of a redevelopment of an entire parcel. So in those situations, they would have to meet the minimum FAR requirements. So I will stop sharing for a moment. If there's any questions about any of the FAR items that have been covered. If everyone is just completely glazed over by now.
Now we've been following along. I don't see any questions, so I think we can.
We'll go back to it then. So the next one is on affordable housing. And this is one, and we've spent, uh, quite a bit of time speaking about this and talking with the commission, getting direction from the commission. And Mike Stanger has been doing a lot of work in coming up with, uh, some proposals here. So this would apply to, basically can only apply to those zones where we're providing an increase in capacity. Most of the capacity or all of the capacity in some cases, I think, and Mike can correct me on this, um, is due to the reductions in parking requirements. And those apply in the RMUH, M, ORH and ORM zones. Would not apply in the ORL or either of the employment zones that we are proposing. And that's important to keep in mind when we talk about some of the other provisions here. So the, the proposal is that ten percent of new dwelling units created within these zones shall be affordable at the following levels. So it would be, um, at owner occupied, it would be moderate income households. For renter occupied, it would be mid-moderate income households. And those are defined. And you can see the high level area for mid-moderate is seventy percent of area median income or AMI. And the moderate income is at eighty percent of area median income. moderate income is at 80% of area median income. And it's important that we provide for both owner and renter occupied because there could be some condominium development or something at some point that would also then have to, have to meet that. The second item is related to non-residential development or commercial development. And there would be a linkage fee similar to what we've done in the downtown. For those of you who were on the commission last year or the year before, when we put some affordable housing provisions in some up zones to some of the downtown zoned areas, we also put a linkage fee. So if a commercial building is going in, they don't have any residential, there's a per square foot fee that would be paid then into an affordable housing fund. And we're confirming the numbers on this. We have a number currently that Mike has been working with. And we're asking our other consultants to look at that number in the context of the cost of doing commercial development. Make sure that we're not creating something that would be an infeasible situation. So that would, that fee would actually go into the, the fee resolution that the city adopts. It would not be part of this, part of the regulations. And then the only other changes related to the affordable housing have to do with the definitions and then the linkage fees and the payment of those and how those all work together. Mike, did you want to say anything else about this?
No, I don't have anything to add. Thanks. You covered it really well.
So, Mr. Olson. I'm mute.
Okay, I think I got it. Thanks for your patience. So I, I'm not, this isn't necessarily about the code, the proposed code. It's more of a question of how this works. So with owner occupied housing, that's creating housing that would be sold to an owner to live in, right? When they sell it, is there something that makes sure they sell it to somebody in that moderate income bracket? Or is it just, can somebody just come up with the cash and buy it even if they're not moderate income? I guess I'm wondering how protected that is.
Mike, I know you have an answer to that. Go ahead.
Sure, I do. Yes, when the, at the very initial sale by the builder to the first homeowner, the, that buyer signs a, what we call a resale covenant with the city that is recorded on the land. And then one of the conditions is that they will sell it to another qualified home buyer. Arch on behalf of the city will, will set the price when it's time to resell the house the next time. And the new buyer, the subsequent buyer will also sign a resale covenant. And so that continues on like that to keep the housing affordable long term.
Thank you.
Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe is, isn't there also some sort of an escalator clause so that it does go up in value over time, but just not, maybe not as much as it would under a totally market-driven price?
That's right. It's a little complicated to go into, but, but I'd be happy to, once I, if I have a chance to refresh my memory.
And I, and I'm not looking for a number. The only reason I bring it up is because I think it's important to note that, that the owners, the buyers of these properties can build equity in the property.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And, and that's just an important part of the program, I think, that I just wanted to point out. I, the escalation clause itself isn't necessarily relevant to what I was trying to, yeah, across. Thank you.
If you answered a question I was about to ask, that people in these, will be able to build equity and enhance themselves financially. So, Mr. Olson.
Sarah Augustin, thank you to the other commissioners for the great questions. It made me wonder, how does Arch know that the building is being sold? Is there monitoring that happens when the sale goes to the county? Does the county then inform Arch? How does Arch audit that everything is working the way it's supposed to be working with those sales?
There, there, well, there's a clause in the resale covenant, which, and the, because the resale covenant is recorded, it should come up in a title search when, when they're working to put that home on the market. And the clause is actually that the city has the first right to buy the home within the first 60 days. And the reason that is there is that in case the, the buyers financially distressed and may run the risk of losing the home, then the city can, in effect, rescue it and resell it. But then the city also then turns and directs the, their right to the public, you know, other eligible buyers to be able to, to be able to offer on the home.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Curd.
Thanks. This is Karsten. Thanks, Mike, for putting all the hard work into these changes. I don't want to get too far into the weeds here, but I do have another question that's kind of linked to the other ones that have been asked. And that is, in 20 years, on one of these affordably owned parcels, if the structure is going to go under a change and become like a new house or a corner lot duplex or something, is it possible that even those, those modifications would be retaining that title of affordability? Or is it, is it like with the land or is it with the structure? Or is there no difference between the two?
There might be, I suppose there's a technical difference. In effect, I don't think there, there is a difference now. Are you supposing, are you asking if the owner actually wanted to split the home into two units?
Yeah, split or redevelop, I guess. It's kind of a hypothetical, but in its long term, like, we can't expect that a house is going to remain a house long term. And I feel like these are probably condominium units that would be kind of targeted by this, but...
Right. Well, that really becomes a land use zoning issue, but the, the, because the covenant is on the land and the city also has that control over the affordability. So I mean, there's provision to amend the, it's possible to amend the covenant or to replace the covenant if the city was willing to allow a different use, such as two units.
Understood. Thanks.
Questions or comments? Mr. Alderks.
Jenny Alderks here. I just want to just express my gratitude that we are having this conversation and this was included within the sub area plan as a result of the conversations that we've had here. It's, I, it may be the weeds, but I'm also very grateful to better understand how affordably owned housing would work here in Bothell. And so thank you for explaining kind of the, the, the long-term consequences of a house that is, or, you know, a home that is purchased and then sold and how we can maintain that affordability in the community. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. And I don't think any of these questions were too weedy, but if you'd like to get more weedy, I'd be happy to come back sometime.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the affordable housing section of this sub area plan? Seeing none, I think we can proceed.
Okay. I also want to express my appreciation to, to Mike. He's always been very helpful when we're working on affordable housing issues in the city. Arch has, has just been tremendously helpful through this process and other processes. And I would also say, it's a little bit of a left-handed compliment that Mike also produced some really extraordinary spreadsheets that he used to model all of this. And we spurred you, him sharing all of that with you. So I appreciate that.
I'm going to go to the commission. I thank you for not sharing those sheets.
Did I see a hand? Commissioner Olson? Oh, I thought I saw your hand up. Sorry. So those are the definitions that we talked about that go with that. The next is informational. Last time, we did mention the transfer of development rights. This is something that we'll do in coordination with Sound Transit. We are still negotiating with them on having them pay for the study, the feasibility study, and then the, the code that would implement it. So we're just putting a placeholder here in the code. Also, because of the work that, Mike's been doing a lot of work on this as well, and as well as Bob, trying to figure out the bonus floor area ratio incentives. And you recall, the commission had a discussion about what types of incentives, what types of things they would like to get through that incentive program, including things like solar access, or green building, or green infrastructure, those types of things. And, and we're looking at all of those and there's some potential there. But the complexity of it and, and just the fact that we weren't able to find a lot of good models for that yet, just caused me to decide that this is something that's going to have to come later on as part of implementation. We just don't, we're not able to include it in the code at this time, but we are creating a placeholder for it so that we don't lose sight of that. And this will again, would be tied to the FAR. As you recall from the earlier table that Bob shared, there is no maximum FAR. So we would build in, you'd get 0.25 FAR for doing certain things, for example. And it's figuring out what those values are and how they should translate into the FAR that we're, we're still, still working on. Bob, did you want to add anything? Or Mike, anything on that?
No, I think you've, I think you've said that correctly, Michael.
Yep.
I'm good.
Okay. Thank you. The street design, circulation, and parking. This is something, again, we came to the commission last time, we've covered that. This is another comment that came from the Business Park Owners Association. I think a lot of their comments seemed to do, had to do with what we were defining as a quote unquote neighborhood street and whether or not that truly was a neighborhood street, given traffic volumes or given the types of uses that would be there. And the fact that we discovered, we also have neighborhood street defined in our design and construction standards. So we decided to change that name just to avoid any confusion about that. So Bob has come up with another creative name there for, for neighborhood streets. And, and also to emphasize, it's really about the streetscape. It's not the street so much. It's really about what's outside of the travel lanes. So it's trying to really clarify what the intent of that is. And the whole purpose all along, the big issue with, we heard from, one example from the Business Park Owners Association, had to do with 17th and the fact that that's going to be the extension of the dedicated access ramp off of I-405 and the amount of traffic that would be on that street, and whether that would really be quote unquote a neighborhood street. The explanation and our intent all along has been not so much about the street itself, but the pedestrian environment that would exist on the sidewalk, which can occur on busy streets as well as, you know, less busy streets. It's really more about how that's designed and, and how that's activated. So we're hoping that helps to clear up some of those things. Through block connections, again, building in some additional flexibility and the commission had approved that last time. The next has to do with parking requirements. These, just want to show you the reductions that have been made based on the discussion and direction from the commission at the October 21st meeting. Likewise, the building setback and height regulations, those are ones that you've had seen and proved before. The next has to do with the fee and lieu option. And I'm going to ask Dave to explain this because I understand it, but I'm not sure that I can explain it anywhere near as well as he can. But Dave, would you, would you walk him through this, please?
Is Dave still here?
I am here. I'm sorry. I had trouble getting unmuted and, and back on camera. And let me go back to the, so basically what we are proposing is, is a bit of a hybrid between what Planning Commission had proposed in downtown and, and the, the last proposal you saw for Canyon Park. And which basically allowed smaller projects up to a certain size to use an in lieu fee, which was kind of consistent with the, the basic approach in downtown, that it was intended for the smaller infill type projects. But it, in reality, it created a situation where a smaller project could use in lieu fee for 50% of their, their public space requirement and which, so it was already a small, small amount. And, and then we were potentially cutting that or allowing an applicant to cut that in half. So instead, we've come up with this system based on the increments that were used in the downtown plan with a few variations. First of all, there aren't many small infill lots in Canyon Park. So we didn't include the exemption for those smaller projects, but we did allow applicants to use an in lieu fee for all of their required public space over up to 1,000 square feet. Then between 1,000 and 3,000 square feet, which was the increment in downtown where we allowed in lieu fees to be used outright, we said that there they could use the 50% in lieu fee requirement, provided that any onsite space has a usable area of at least 500 square feet. So we'll still have a reasonable size open space, public space. And then for projects over that require more than 3,000 square feet, then they can use in lieu fee for up to 10% of their requirement. And it's incremental so that there isn't, one, one of the comments in downtown was that we're, we're allowing those projects between 1,000 and 3,000 that require, that have a public space requirement between 1,000 and 3,000 to use in lieu fee without any limit. And then above that, they were limited to the 10%. Here, if they can use their, the same requirement for up to their 3,000 square foot level, then it becomes a graded requirement so that you don't have these sudden breaks and, and a situation where a project requiring 3,000 square feet can you use in lieu fee entirely, but 3,001, they're only allowed to use in lieu fee for 301 square feet of that. So, and we're also proposing this, adopting this system in, in the, we're making this change with the downtown plan requirements because it, it was, it addresses a comment that came up in, from the Planning Commission and, and still allows some flexibility and a graded scale of, of public space. And then we've incorporated some of the same provisions for how the in lieu fees will be calculated and how they can be used and also allowing the transfer from, from sites within a half, half mile. There we go.
Any questions or comments? Commissioner Olson?
Thanks, Chair, and thanks, Dave. I guess my question is, is there some sort of mechanism for community members to reach out to the, it says, you know, at the director's discretion to sort of request like, hey, we could use, you know, X kind of public space over here. How's that fund looking? You know what I mean? You know what I mean? Obviously it wouldn't be like that, but is, I guess, is there any community input in how that's spent?
What I would say is that in Canyon Park, the, the subarea plan has identified some public space opportunities, places where we would like to see gathering spaces. So we are proposing to set this up in a way so that these in-lo fees, any in-loo fees generated, could go towards those public spaces, because those are not in our capital facilities plan. Our Parks Department has said that they don't have the funds to build those. So, so in the sense that the community helped develop the, the plan, yes, that they have, those spaces have been identified. Beyond that, the, the types of things that these fees can be used for would be other enhancements to public rightsway or other public parks. So it wouldn't necessarily be used to create new open spaces. But again, if, if there was a, a, if someone brought to our attention an opportunity to do that, that would, that would meet the provisions of these in-loo fees, then, then we certainly could consider that.
Commissioner Alders.
Jenny Alders here. Thank you, Commissioner Olson, for that question, because I'd like to build on that and say, and ask the question, could something like a, like a fountain feature, or a, well, my dream is splash pad, be, be, the in-loo fees be used for something like that within the subarea?
I would say in theory, yes, if, if there was a space available for that, that lent itself to those kind of improvements, then, then the process could allow that.
Commissioner Olson.
Thank you. I will say my thanks right back to Commissioner Alders, because I remember that Roger Blandage was talking about donating land for a park. Could the fees be used to build out that park, since we know that parks is struggling?
I'd like to jump in if I could. I think one of the, one of the reasons that we are using this particular fee-in-loo mechanism is because we have a lot more flexibility with that than we do with, say, impact fees, which have to go through a whole different process than part of our capital facilities plan. So to answer your questions, I think yes, to most of those things. As long as we can explain that it is meeting the intent of what the fee is about, which is to provide or enhance that public space in Canyon Park area, then we have a lot of flexibility in how we would use those funds. Obviously, there's still work that needs to be done, and we talked about this in the, in the context of the downtown fee-in-loo as well. There's more internal work that we have to do to sort out exactly how we would decide about the use of those funds. Because low and behold, when you create a pot of money, there's a lot of people that get interested in that very quickly. And there's a lot of need out there as well. So we do want to make sure that we put a very deliberate process in place that would identify how those funds could be used. I would also suggest, and I don't want to speak for the Parks Department or put them on the spot here, because I don't know everything about their process for doing this. But if there were something that was going to be done that was more of a, you know, a, a public feature, say, like a splash fountain, or some type of an active space, that they would go through a public process in terms of, of the design of that. So I could envision that happening. And again, I don't want to speak for them, because I'm not sure what their process is, but I could see that as an opportunity if, you know, for a larger type of capital project. If it's more of beefing up a public space with some additional landscaping, or some benches, or something like that, it may not, you know, involve the public input, for example. It's, it has to do with the scale, the use, the location, how it fits in the, in the broader context of things.
Commissioner Olson.
Thank you. Point of order, I'm never sure if I'm allowed to say thank you after someone's answered my question. That would be cool to know. But I'm not getting too attached to the vision of the park in my head, by the way. Thank you for the answers.
Thank you Chair. Jenny Alders here. Another question for you, Director Cotterman. It sounds like you're saying that the in-loo fees could also go towards, if it can go to things like benches, it could also go to things like public arts. Is that a possibility as well?
Yes, some of our internal discussion, we've, we've run the gamut from things like public art, to benches, to fountains, to, you know, actually purchasing land and creating just a little pocket park or open space type of situation, to even programming. So if we wanted to have an event to try to activate a space, to bring people into that, let them know that it is a public space, and encourage the use, there could be some sort of an event held there, and the funds could potentially be used for that as well.
This is Derek Boyd again. I'd just like to add that we're not, as in downtown, we're really not trying, I think we have some more flexibility for use of, of in-loo fees in Canyon Park. But as in downtown, we're not really trying to generate a lot of funds. We're really hoping that most applicants will provide the space onsite. And we're, by setting the, the fee based on the cost of land and the cost of developing it, we were hoping that, that the, that most will find it actually more beneficial to provide it onsite.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, I think we can proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Dave, for explaining that for me. The essential public facilities, these are mostly things that we talked about last time, and the commission approved the staff's recommendation on those regarding the through-block connections for essential public facilities. These were, these were suggestions from Sound Transit. Staff did not recommend adopting their language. As far as the, one area where we did make some changes from last time in further discussions with Sound Transit, and some additional work by staff, the, the outdoor open space design regulations were an area of concern, given the, the nature and the use of the site. And we could also see this being an issue for other types of sites, particularly in the employment areas, where we have large buildings on sites, and in some cases, they do have limitations on, you know, how much space they have to work with, or providing access to those areas. So this is some departure language that we are recommending. So these would be design departures that could be granted if they demonstrate compliance with the purpose for the onsite outdoor space. And then also, an exception, in some cases, they may have some natural areas on the site that would also lend themselves to providing that. And because there are some design requirements that go with this in terms of providing seating, for example, we want to provide some latitude there, because it may not make sense to have the same design features in, in all of these different spaces, depending on the nature of the space. So there's some language added there. And Dave, I don't know if you wanted to, I know you had worked on this. If you want to add anything to the explanation about these recommended changes?
Just very briefly, some examples are from downtown, where the Six Oaks projects, where they save the Six Oaks. We didn't require them to put pathways through there, or benches in that area. It's, it's along a sidewalk. It, it definitely benefits the pedestrian environment. So that, those are the sorts of things. And on the same project, they, they put their, some, a rain garden adjacent to another open space and, and the public sidewalk. So it provides green space and visual interest to the, to the pedestrian environment. So those sort of things would be allowed by these exceptions.
Not seeing any. Commissioner?
Chair, Jenny Alders here. I have my hand up. Thank you. Just a point of, I don't even know. Sorry. At Six Oaks in downtown, the public, the, the dog park, or like the dog area, that is also public, right? It's not, I think we've had this conversation before, but they actually found some pretty, if I'm remembering that correctly, they found some pretty unique ways to use their public space. And, you know, although I would love to say that if they were to do more with the Six, the Oaks area, I like the idea of benches, or fountains, or something around there, but I do enjoy walking under it. So thanks, thanks for bringing that up. I thought I would share.
Okay, any other comments, questions?
Okay. And then the last item, again, this is about the cross-section for 20th Avenue, which shows a 40-foot swale basically on the side. It's the only area where Sound Transit has entrance into their site, and they've asked for some relief from that. So we don't have any specific recommendations at this time. And we've actually been discussing internally whether the cross-sections are really more appropriately included, not in the regulations, the zoning regulations, but in the design and construction standards, which is where we have all of our other street cross-section standards. So, and I think that's where we're going to end up, in which case, we can work those things out through that process with Sound Transit. So again, we're not making any recommendations at that, at this time, to make changes there. And I think that addresses all of the items that they had raised. Then the conflicts with CCNRs, this is again from the Canyon Park Business Owners Association. They had proposed some language that would basically codify and what has been our practice to date, which is where there is a conflict that exists, that the provisions of the CCNRs would apply, and that no departure from city's code requirements would be necessary. And that's really getting at, we wouldn't require the applicants to go through an additional process or get an additional approval in order to comply with the CCNRs as opposed to the city's regulations. The staff is not recommending that language in discussions with our, our legal staff. We felt that it was not appropriate to codify CCNRs in our code. So we're going to continue our practice. I think there may still be some, some concerns and some issues there. We're going to continue our conversations with the Business Park Owners Association to make sure we can address that. But we, we feel we have mechanisms in place to do that.
Commissioner Olson, I see you. Question, comment?
Thank you Chair. It's me again. So does, I guess I'm not fully sure about the structure of the Business Owners Association. Does every property in a certain area have to be a part of it? Can they opt out at all?
Every property within the boundaries of the original business park, the Canyon Park Business Center as it's named, and they did this, I think, through CCNRs. It's essentially like a homeowners association, except it's non-residential. The property owners of those parcels. I don't know if they can opt out. That's a good question. I've, that's never come up. I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? I think we're near the end of the Canyon Park development relations portion.
I do have one other item that is not on the list, and again, this came out of some discussions with the Canyon Park Business Owners Association, and it refers to things like the through-block connections, like some of the street improvements, or frontage improvements, other things that, you know, requirements that we would have on new development or redevelopment, and where it may not make sense to have something that would be a partial improvement or discontinuous. So a through-block connection, for example, may go partway through one parcel to the other property line, but then there's another parcel on the other side that's not doing any redevelopment, so that would just stop there. And they are suggesting that we look at putting some type of mechanism in place that would allow for a deferral in some situations. So that's, that's one of the things that we're looking at more closely. We don't have anything recommended at this time. And again, that could come after adoption as well. That could be something we could come back and, and add into the code as a way to address those situations. Our intent, though, is to try to get as many of those in place. We often have situations where, and I'm sure you've seen these as you've driven around town or walked around town, where we have a discontinuous sidewalk, for example. And it's because a new subdivision or plat, subdivision, short plat went in. They did frontage improvements, and you have a nice new sidewalk along the frontage of those parcels. And then you get to the next parcel that's been there for 50 years, and there's no sidewalk. So it's not ideal, but it's, it's the mechanisms that we have to make those things happen. And over time, you do achieve the full buildup. But that's the only other item that we had this evening, unless, you know, Bob, or Dave, or Rachel, or Steve, if you have anything else you wanted to add?
No, I think we're good.
This is Steve. Kind of a small question, a small clarification potentially, or at least discussion about some flexibility. So we talked about the eight-foot planters and eight-foot sidewalks along all their arterials. Probably along 527, it makes a lot of sense. There's a lot of cars there, and you want as much buffer as you can. And that entire stretch is within the, kind of the business area, and probably the retail area. I would like to discuss potentially having some flexibility in determining the extent. As an example, on 524, half of 524 is actually in Snohomish County, and we don't have much say at this point. We can create guidelines, but it's really in the county. If you think about 524, it makes sense to do that probably in, in, near the intersection, where we're going to try to get more density. As you go up to the west, though, we're actually building the rest, the final North Creek Trail on the south side of the road. It doesn't really make sense to change the criteria on that road there. And north side, it's heavily residential in, in Snow County. Similarly, when you go more toward the east, it gets a lot more rural as well, and you're getting out of the business area. 228 is a little similar. If we just stay 228 along the entire length within the subarea, has eight-foot sidewalks, eight-foot planters. As you get more toward the east, again, there's a lot of green area there, and there might be some challenges in getting a planter there next to wetlands and things, where it doesn't make sense to impact the wetland to get a planter in there, especially if you have a bike lane and you have some buffer with the bike lane, things like that. So I guess I wanted to just bring it up a little bit, because I know the Planning Commission wants to see that with, and I think it makes sense, but not necessarily a broad brush across the entire length of those arterials.
Commissioners, comments, or I see the little?
Thanks. This is Karsten. Thanks for the comment, Steve. It's good to get some clarity on kind of the far-reaching implications of some of these ideas that we're proposing. I do feel, though, that we're relying on these major arterials to bring people in to the subarea, whether by bike, or on foot, or wheels, outside of single occupancy vehicles. And so the, an intent needs to be, kind of our precedent needs to be set that we are doing what's necessary to protect pedestrian and bicycling infrastructure, even on these kind of major roads. And I think that the intent is there. I just want to make sure that it is like blatantly obvious in, in the subarea code and design documents too. So I just want to be really hesitant before we allow kind of divergence on more rural areas, or green, or wetland spaces, just because we'll be relying on those areas as well for pedestrian and bicycling infrastructure.
Bob, do you want to link in?
Yes, I had a look at the, at the district map in my copy of the matrix. And one point of clarification is the, those streetscape cross-sections in that eight and eight standard would just apply to the, the portion of the subarea that's within the, the RGC. would just apply to the portion of the subarea that's within the RGC. So it wouldn't apply to those rural portions. So if you, I'm looking at the district map in the decision matrix. So up at, at the north end there, along the city boundary line or the county line, it would only apply to the area next to the RMUH zone, for instance. And the same thing down in the south, 220th. So it would apply to the RMUH, and I think that's the ORH to the north. So it wouldn't apply to those areas outside of the RGC. And that's based on the applicability section in code that says that these regulations apply to the RGC, not necessarily the entire subarea. So I think with that change, if you kind of, if you looked at the map and looked at it with that, in that manner, maybe, maybe we're okay.
Okay. And I must have missed that. I didn't realize there was that nuance on the RGC. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments on the Canyon Park Development Regulations? I want to thank staff for the tremendous amount of work that's been done on this over a significant period of time, and the individuals, the city consultants who have been involved in this. I appreciate that you've heard a lot of what the Commission has said and incorporate that into the plan, so thank you for that. And we will be having an additional public hearing on this in the next meeting with a goal towards voting on a recommendation with some findings to move this forward to the Council. So that, I think we end this study session. Getting a little close, I'm going to ask for a motion, maybe to extend the meeting by five minutes so we can wrap up. I think there are some old business and comments from members. So, Mr. Olson?
Thank you. I move to extend the meeting by five minutes.
Is there a second to that motion? Commissioner Aldrich, are you first?
I'm second the motion to extend the meeting by five minutes.
Okay, all in favor of a five-minute extension, and we'll try to keep it to just five. Okay, we unanimous on that? So we'll close the study session, move on to old business. Under old business, I would, yes, goodbye to consultants, see you can check out.
Thanks, Bob. Thank you, Rachel. Thanks, Mike.
So again, at the last meeting, the Commission voted on a letter to be presented to Council. I did transmit that letter to the Council, and then during the public comment period, I read that letter. I was fairly early on in the comments. A number of commenters after me voiced similar concerns and interests, so I think you also heard about that. That's my comment. I think other members may have a little more to say on this. Commissioner Olson?
I was just going to say, thank you, Chair. I got the chance to watch you read the letter, and I really appreciate that you did that, and I thought you represented us very well. And I also watched last night's meeting where they were talking about the budget, and, keep me honest, but it looks like they did go ahead and vote to approve a part-time DEI position in the next biennium's budget. So that was very cool to see that a couple of council members mentioned the letter that we wrote. So it was nice to see kind of the results of the work that we put in.
Commissioner Gustafson, I think you had a comment on this?
Thank you, Chair. Sarah Gustafson here, yes, echoing what Amanda said, or Commissioner Olson said. Chair Kieran, and thank you for representing us with clarity and with gravity, and also adding your own personal coda to the end about the budget being a moral document. I think I heard that sentiment echoed by some of the council members in that meeting and in the meeting after that, so it really made an impact, and thank you for doing that on behalf of the Commission.
Thank you. Any other old business then, Commissioner?
Thank you, Chair. Jenny Aldrich's here. To add to, I would also add my thanks. Chair Kieran and I spoke briefly last night where I expressed my gratitude to him, but I would also echo that thanks and of my fellow Commissioners that he, and that you read the letter on our behalf. I did go ahead last night and make public comment of my, on my own individually, and I made it very clear to, to preface my remarks that I was commenting as a member of the public and sharing my personal perspectives on our work with the Planning Commission. And so I did make public comment. I want you guys to know that I stated I was a planning commissioner, but I was not intending to speak for anyone else on the Commission. That said, the, I would add some additional information to what has been shared here. The, what has been, what the Council voted to include in the budget is a part-time position for 2021, and they also committed to a part-time position for 2022 as well. But the intention and the desire is to convert that position from part-time to full-time in the 2022 budget. That would be something that they would need to, to work into the budget next year, kind of, in, oh gosh, don't know the correct words, but in the, in the interim, as they move into 2022. But I just do want to thank each of the Commissioners for contributing to that letter and for the conversation around that letter. So this is definitely a win for our community. There have been, you know, almost 300 people who spoke out on this topic in particular. And to see the, see the community come together at a time in history when, when equity is being called for across the country, I believe is really, really a powerful statement that our community can make. So thank you to each of you for participating in that.
Thank you all as well. Any other old business we would like to discuss? Okay, reports from staff, anything from staff for us?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Unfortunately, I have a few things on here, but I'll try to go through them quickly. One, I just wanted to note that the public hearing on the downtown public space was continued from the last council meeting to December 8th. So Dave Boyd will be presenting some changes that he talked about this evening in the approach, as well as a couple other amendments to that. The student project is continuing. Just want to let you know, this is the Canyon Park project that we're doing with the undergrad program at UW. And they're putting out a survey to businesses, particularly smaller businesses in the Thrasher's Corner and Canyon Park Place area. They'll be following up. I believe they're going to try to do some phone call follow-ups as well. And then they've been doing research, and we haven't seen any, anything yet, but I know they've been doing some research on best practices for equity analysis and what other jurisdictions are doing. They will also be, once they get their report done, they put their product together, we have asked if they would be interested and willing to come and do a presentation to the Planning Commission and possibly the City Council as well. So we'll let you know. I'm hoping that we'll be able to happen, and they're very excited about the possibility. It's probably going to be more of a scheduling logistical issue than anything, but we'll, we'll do our best to make that happen. As you, most of you have probably noticed, if you watched any planning commissions the last couple of times, they are now using Zoom rather than WebEx. We will be moving to Zoom, which should be an improvement of our current situation. I don't know when that will happen, but I will keep you posted on that, but just wanted to let you know that it will be getting better. We will be making that transition. The agenda items for the upcoming meetings are in your packet. I won't go over those. We've got a very busy month of December coming up between the Planning Commission and the City Council with the agenda items and those meetings. The, the other thing I wanted to talk about in terms of the schedule is the, are the December meetings and the January meetings. So we have a couple of items. Next meeting, which will include Canyon Park recommendation, as the Chair mentioned, and then I believe we're going to talk about duplexes and short plats again next meeting, Dave. I think that's coming back, if I recall correctly. So then for the, the meeting on the 16th, we would come back with the critical areas and possibly some more on the duplex and short plat, depending on the discussion on the December 2nd meeting. And my intent is also, if I'm able to get this put together, would be to come to the Commission with a preliminary docket for '21, so that we can, as we've done in the past, we bring you a draft, sort of our initial thinking based on what's continuing, other requirements that we've come up that we have to meet, and bring that to you so you can have some input on that before we finalize it and take it to Council in January or February. So we have two meetings in December. We have items for both of those meetings. The January meeting, the first one would be January 6th. I am asking if the Commission would be willing to cancel that meeting, and then the next meeting will be on January 20th. Reason being, it's, it's early after the new year, after all the holidays. I think many of us will be still recovering from celebrating the end of 2020. That's not the main reason. The main reason is that both Dave and I will be gone the last two weeks in December, so it would be very difficult for us to prepare a packet. And I think just given all the progress that the Commission has made on everything else that we can afford to maybe miss that first meeting in January. So if you're all okay with that, we will cancel that first meeting. Okay, great. Thank you. Appreciate that. There was something else related to meetings that I was going to mention, and it is escaping me. Oh, I know. The, so for the public hearing, the next meeting, the three documents that you'll be recommending to the Council include the subarea plan, the development regulations, and the planned action ordinance. You will be getting the, the final drafts of those. They're all rather hefty documents, so what we're actually going to do with the City Council, because they're going to have a briefing the night before your public hearing, we're going to provide them with the same documents, but we're going to provide them with the links to those documents. I wanted to know if you're all okay with that, or if you want us to put together the, everything in the package, so you can, you've got the whole thing together, or are you okay with having links to those documents that would be on the website?
So links?
Everybody's okay with links?
I'm seeing links.
Okay, thank you. We can do it either way. It's just, it's a lot of, it's a lengthy PDF, and we'll, we'll separate them on the website.
If it works for Council, we'll make it work for us. We don't need, we just have to work.
Okay. I should mention, we didn't give them a choice. We're just doing it, but I wanted to add that.
We won't tell them.
That's all I had, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much.
Okay. Couple of minutes left. Any reports from members? Sheriff Lee?
Yeah, really brief, because I know we only have a couple of minutes. I wish I could expand on this more. For a couple of years, I actually worked with Director Cotterman for some time, as well as a preservation consultant. I was really trying my best to personally figure out a way to save the Erickson House and Carriage House from Country Village, which you might have known, noticed were demolished this past week. But there's a really cool little silver lining that maybe I'll share later, but essentially the city required them to basically salvage out the usable parts. And myself, I actually went by and took some of the salvage, as well as a lot of the local people did. So I think it's kind of cool that there is this waste diversion, kind of requirement put on the developer, and I wish I could expand more on it. I have pictures and cool stories about it, but it was, you know, it was sad that the building couldn't be saved, and that Country Village went away, but it was kind of a nice little ending of that, so. But I know we're almost out of time. Sorry about that.
All right, thank you. Well, in my previous life in salvage management, we did do a lot of work on buildings salvage. And some of those old timbers, old grilled timbers, have some real value, so it's worth the effort. Any other reports from members? We're right at our 9:05? Now, can I ask for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
And Mr. Olson? And all in favor? So the November 18th meeting of the Bottle Planting Commission is adjourned at 9:05 tonight. Thank you all. Hope you have a very healthy and happy Thanksgiving, with perhaps this year the emphasis on healthy. Take care, and we'll see you all in December.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.